Let's, let's start the meeting, the meeting with a salute of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon, everybody. This is the regular meeting of the planning board, the monthly meeting. It's, it's Tuesday, January 24th. It's 5:00 PM. Doris, we have, we have the stenographer on. Good. Hello, Nat. Nat Brown is entering the room. So we'll give him a moment to, as is Kathy Iceman. We're just, just now starting. Hello. Ron Reed is here. Very well. And Neil Seven's here. I mean, Neil Seven is not here. Larry Farina is here.
Neil won't be here.
I don't think he's here. Right, right. But Nat Brown is. All is well. We just did the flag salute. So that's, you missed that. But the minutes, you're here for the minutes. So I know that they were, they were emailed around. If they would have a chance to look at them and if someone wants to. Motion to approve them?
Some moved.
Moved by Kay, seconded by Ron. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you both. Public comment section. Does anyone, it doesn't look like there's anyone that wants to speak about anything generally to the planning board, but this is the moment when you would, if there are people in the audience that, and I made space for that, just so there's an opportunity for the public to ask questions. It looks like there's no one today or online. So we'll move forward from that. Today we have, for board discussion, I moved it to the beginning because Aiden, it works with trustee Aiden's schedule, which is, I'm thrilled that he's here, as is John Parker. I'll let them speak to what they're doing, but essentially what it is, they're going to be talking to us about the extension possibilities of the wastewater treatment plant. And we have Bob Plum in the audience as well. So this is a good opportunity for everyone to learn more about where we are and where we're going. So I will hand it over to John Parker and Aiden Corrigan.
Yeah, I guess if I come up here, I think Aiden and I are going to bounce back and forth on this. We've been working on this for, I don't know, four years at least. Together. At the last meeting, I gave a, you know, initial sort of overview of the program and went back to 1897. And we won't go back that far today, but we'll try to, try to move ahead. It's going to do a little bit of a, of a review with the presentation that was made before the, the, the village board. And then we'll get into where we're going from, from here in terms of what areas of the, of the village are we planning to, to sewer next? What's the, what's the overall plan, et cetera? And we'd like a lot of questions and a lot of, you know, feedback from you on this and suggestions, recommendations, et cetera. Aiden, are you ready to go?
Yes, John, I am ready. Let me open up this folder and then I will share. Hang on a sec. Okay, so let me see if I can share my screen. Hold on.
While, while he's doing that, let me just say that most of this documentation is on the village website. The, the version of the master sewer plan, which is a hundred and some page, you know, document, it's, it's on the village website. It's, I think it's the August version that's on there that's being updated. And if you really want to get into the details, you know, look at that. I know John has, has read it and more recently than I have. But you can get a lot of details that we won't go into, you know, today by looking at that plan. That plan is going to be updated periodically and Aiden and I already know some of the updates that are going in there. But it's a good place to start.
Can you see, John, can you see my screen up there?
Yes.
Okay, so let me, let me kick this off. Thank you very much for making time in your meeting tonight to have us come by and present our current state of affairs with this sewer master plan and the sewer service area expansions. Tonight's presentation will be, will run through the master plan, just as a, not the whole plan, a very shortened version as a, as a PDF presentation. We'll talk about the two phases that are underway as far as expansion goes, phase one, phase two. I'll give you a brief update on the, the state of our grants, because this is a very expensive undertaking, and also the capital planning that's underway to match those grants, because most of these grants are going to be, or all of them to a large extent, will be reimbursement grants. So the village is going to be in a position to have to fund these projects and then apply for, for the grant, for the grant money afterwards, even though the grant is guaranteed. So that's the lay of the land. Here we go. This started about four years ago, when John and I, a few other folks sat down and looked at the amount of excess capacity that was in the wastewater treatment plant. I know this had been looked at before. And so basically, we want to develop a plan to protect the village's waterways. And because of the negative impacts due to excess nitrogen, and we all know that nitrogen, excess nitrogen degrades the waterways. This, the, the state of our waterways is pretty much confirmed every year by independent testing that we, we use Dr. Gobler from Stony Brook University, and he comes in, I think, a little familiar with the ongoing testing. So we get a confirmation, we have a good idea, we have a base of where the areas are that need, that, that need help. We've also been able to identify the source of the pollution when it comes to coliforms, because we've been doing microbial source tracking or DNA testing on the samples over the last two years. So we know we have excess capacity and we set out to identify those areas on the land side that were the most polluting, not through any fault of their own, but we have a lot of older homes in the village, we have a lot of old wastewater systems, and we have a rising water table and the combination of all of those, all of those entities creates a hazard for our waterways. So the plan started to, we identified the available capacity, excess capacity, and then we identified how to best utilize that asset to protect the village's waters. So we looked at the village and we wanted to establish boundaries of various sewer sheds to be able to carve the village out into various areas based on the scientific, scientific and engineering methods, so that we could create a hierarchy of neighborhoods that we ought to treat. And this was done by ranking and scoring of all these sewer sheds. Brief overview of the sewage treatment plant, the wastewater treatment plant, for those who are not familiar. On the left side of your screen, you show the location. It's down just to the east of Marine Park. And the overhead shows that we have five SBR basins. Each one is 50,000 gallons. That gives us our 250,000 gallon capacity.
Aiden, can I interrupt you for a second?
Yep.
We're seeing the first page on this, on the screen.
Oh, you, you haven't seen the updated page?
We're not seeing any, any, any pages other than the aerial view of the.
Okay. Let me resume share. Has anybody, is that, I'm going to stop and start sharing again. Has that updated?
Yes.
Yeah, now, now, now we have.
Okay, so basically, the, the previous page was exactly what I had, what I had said, just in written form. So I haven't really missed any visuals. So here we are at the sewage treatment plant. On the left side, you'll see the location. For those not familiar with it, it's just to the east of Marine Park. And on the right-hand side of this page is an aerial view of the plant itself. We have five called SBR basins, and you'll see those called out on the lower right-hand side. Each one of those has a capacity of 50,000 gallons times five. That gives us our nominal 250,000 gallon capacity at the plant. We open and close. These tanks come online and offline, depending on the time of year. Obviously, summertime is much busier. So the, the excess capacity at the plant is, is considered what's available after we've treated the highest, the highest use time of the year. So that would be summertime. There are other tanks and other, and other operations that go on in addition to these five main tanks, and they all work together to produce what is remarkably good outflow. We normally, I believe IA systems are, are licensed for around 19 parts per million. This sewage treatment plant is licensed at 10, and we normally put out between four and five parts per million of nitrogen, which is a really good product.
I can interrupt just for a second. I just want to point out, when, when you look at, could you go back to the, to treatment plant?
Yeah.
If you, if you look at the top of that, see where it says UV contact chamber? That's an ultraviolet light chamber, which is, which is designed to kill any bacteria that goes through. It may still exist after going through the other processes of this, of this plant. And that's, that's basically state of the art. It's similar to what they have in, in Riverhead. John and I toured the, the Riverhead plant, I don't know, five or six years ago.
Yep.
That was a fairly new plant at that time, or at least they upgraded it. And, and it's the ultraviolet treatment. And we were actually surprised at the time to come back and find out the Sec Harbor had the same.
Yeah. We, we, we used to use, it, it used to be fluorinated and, which was obviously not good for outflow. So the, the ultraviolet was introduced, I think, in about 15, 15, 20, 15 years ago. One thing, when you see reports of the outflow of coliform, the ultraviolet kills the coliform bacteria in the water. It doesn't remove it. So you'll see Dr. Gobler's report. You might see a high count of coliform in this area around the sewage treatment plant, but he'll always have a side note saying that this coliform is dead, it doesn't reproduce and cannot cause any, any injury or any illness. So that's just something to remember when you read these reports. The coliform is not removed from the water. It's just, it's just rendered, it's, it's killed. So it's rendered absolutely harmless. I'm going to move on to the next. Have you seen the screen change?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so this is the available capacity at the wastewater treatment plant. The plant design, as I said earlier, is 250,000 gallons per day. The peak sewage flow pre-COVID was up around 150,000 gallons per day, and that would be July and August in the summer season. A facility plan must be developed and filed with the New York DC at 235,500 gallons per day. So once we hit that number, we have to go to the DC and say, hey, we know we're getting close to our maximum, maximum use at the plant. And here's our plan, whatever that might be. So when we get to that point, we have an obligation to reach out to the DEC and say, you know, this is what we plan to do to deal with this capacity. That plan could be increase the size of the plant. It could be to upgrade the technology. It could be, there's all sorts of different ways of, of dealing with that. So taking those numbers into consideration, we set, or Gober Engineering, who have been our consultant engineers in this project, have set the available excess capacity at about 90,000 gallons per day for planning purposes. Suffolk County requires us to set aside 300 gallons per day per household. So 90,000 gallons roughly equates to about 300 homes. And so that's the number that we can go out and look around the village and say, okay, using our guiding principle of removing the maximum amount of nitrogen per dollar spent, what, you know, and then mitigating that with location, size of property, type of soil, distance from water, distance, distance from the shoreline. How do we come up with a matrix that will allow us to pick the, the most efficient 300 homes for nitrogen removal? The first tranche we looked at, when we broke it up. Let me see. Sorry. Okay, so that was our guiding principle as we moved ahead. A basic overview now of the, of what exists in the village, the existing infrastructure that we were going to be overlaying these new ideas onto. We have seven, we have seven sewer service areas in the village. That's basically seven pipes. One of them comes up Main Street and they branch off various directions. There's one on Washington Street that goes down on Island Avenue, goes all the way out as far on the west side to the apartments. And on the east side, it doesn't go any, interestingly, it doesn't go any further east than the plant. The plant is, the plant lives and is located in the town of East Hampton. Vast majority of the service areas in the town of Southampton. Nothing east of the plant is sewer, not even, not even, not even the US. So we have about 13%, the parcels of the village are connected to the sewers. That's 288 parcels. Unconnected leaves 1,860. So you get to see, you know, the size of the issue we have here, and we only have one for 300. But that led us, you know, there's a conclusion here that this connection to sewage treatment plant is not going to be a panacea for upgrading the sewer, the sewer treatments in the village. We're going to have to look at, like, multiple solutions. And that means IA systems are still a very important part of the mix. Sewage from connected parcels is treated at the wastewater treatment plant, and it reduces nitrogen concentration down to about five milligrams per liter or less. And that's an amazing result. That means that the outflow of, at 19 parts per milligrams per liter for an IA system, we can do, you know, for every three houses, you know, one house, three houses going through the sewage treatment plant is less outflow than one house on an IA, on an IA system. We have discussions underway about upgrading the technology at the plant, which would actually reduce that outflow even more.
And I just interject a second. You know, you talked about the, the, the concentration being five milligrams per liter or less. Drinking water standard is 10 milligrams per liter. So this is half the nitrogen that would be legal in, in drinking water.
Drinking water, correct. So unsuaged parcels that are not on an IA system are contributing nitrogen concentration 55 to 65 milligrams per liter. So you can see that for the outflow of 10 or 11 homes that are, do not have IA systems, and we'll get into IA systems a little bit down the road, but the vast, vast majority of the houses that we are selecting to connect to these, to the plant are not, do not have IA systems, and they're not even suitable for IA systems due to the groundwater and the size of the property. So to, how do we prioritize these areas? So when we looked at the village, we came up with a matrix that we'll get to in a second that delivered. When we applied the matrix to the village, we were able to carve up sewer sheds. Now, the boundaries of these sewer sheds are, they're not hard and fast, because they're based on so many different criteria. We had, tried to come up with some sort of logic that was applied to the science, because you can't, you know, create sewer sheds that are like gerrymander districts. I mean, really, the pipe goes up the street and you have to have some logical connections for, 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 for all the lateral pipes. So you can't go halfway down the street and then jump to another street and jump here and there. You know, you have to come up with these sort of self-contained sensible areas. So the factors for establishing sewer sheds with the physical boundaries, the travel time of effluent from onsite systems to village waterways, the direction of the groundwater flow to receiving waters, the topography, which is the depth to, to the groundwater, and the soil characteristics, the density, the parcel size. And when we took all of that together, we identified 16 sewer sheds in the village. And the proximity to the existing sewer service areas helped to determine the extension areas, because ultimately cost becomes a factor too. It's a lot less expensive to sewer a dense street with lots of homes with smaller lots. And those smaller lots would mean that they're less, that they are less able to accept an IA system. So some of these different constraints work together. So that was essentially how we came up with the sewer sheds. Oops. Hang on a second. Someone wants to be admitted here. Should I admit? Yeah.
Hey, let me correct you a little bit. You didn't come up with sewer sheds. The scientists came up with the sewer shed.
That's correct. No, applying the science came up with the sewer sheds.
This was done by, by analysis that we, in terms of being on the, on the committee, representatives of the village, you know, stayed out of. It was Cameron Engineering that looked at scientific criteria to, to come up with areas of, of the village, dividing them, prioritizing them, using, you know, various scientific criteria, some of which Aiden just talked about. But it's, it's clear that, you know, politics, favoritism, you know, I live in that area, I don't live in that, had nothing to do with it. It was just a scientific analysis of, of those areas.
Right. And so you can see here how the scoring and ranking of sewer sheds, and as John said, this was all on my camera engineering with no input from us. They came back and delivered their matrix. They surveyed the village. I mean, this was a very in-depth survey. In, in, they went from, in some areas, they went from home to home, and they looked at every single, they visited all of the homes in the village, surveyed the streets, they did soil analysis, they did water table testing. So this took best part of six months to get to, to, to get, gather all the information that has gone into, that has gone into determining these sewer sheds. So the factors of importance, high groundwater condition, density of nitrogen, short travel time to waterways. The scores of these factors, factors ranged from a low of one minimal to a high of three, meaning high impact. And the weighting of factors ranged from 10% to 40%, and the total scores for the sewer, sewer sheds ranged a low of 1.0 to a high of three. So there was, there was a lot, there was a lot went into the, the science and the scoring and the data for this. As well as the shore, the shoreline, we have, you know, we have Otter Pond and we have other bodies of waterway within the village. But essentially, most of our waterway interaction with land is along the, along the shoreline. So we have Sec Harbor Bay, the Cove, the Upper Sec Harbor Cove, the Big Narrows, Little Narrows, Mars Cove, Otter Pond, Ligonie Brook, and Little Northwest Creek. So all of these, all of these areas were considered areas for nitrogen to outflow and to leach into and to move into the bay, so that these different waterways were used as part of the scoring. Is, has the screen updated to groundwater travel time?
Yes.
Okay, groundwater travel time. This was another overlay, and it's good to see this in a pictorial form. I mean, nothing here is terribly, terribly surprising. You'll find that zero to two years is all the land that's closest to the waterways. You'll see an interesting, when you, when you look at Redwood, you'll see that area sewer shed G, because of the topography there, that the perimeter of Redwood has a different groundwater travel time than the center, because of the nature of the topography. But you can see as you move south from the shoreline to a large extent, the groundwater, or the groundwater travel time is, goes from zero to two, two to five, five to 10, and then beyond. And this also helps us to know that, how soon would we see improvements? If we improve houses along the shoreline, we'll get to see an improvement in, you know, in zero to two years. But as you move back and sewer other homes, that improvement will take longer to, to, to be seen and to show up. So that was another, that was another consideration and another overlay. Then we looked at, the Cameron, sorry, looked at soil density. And I don't know a whole lot about this, other than different soils will transmit groundwater and outflow from sewer plant, sewage wastewater, onsite wastewater treatment systems at, at a different speed. So you can look through this and you can see areas that are modestly drained as to what the soil density is and what, what the soil constitution is. And this was another consideration that Cameron used to overlay and come up with the. Here you'll see soil characteristics as to what type of soil it is. Soil types, poorly drained, there's muck, tidal marsh, bury land. Some areas are difficult and expensive for IA installation and may require additional drainage. And some soils are not favorable for additional reduction of nitrogen and coliform bacteria. So here's, John might be able to explain this a little better than I can. You can see this chart. I'm not sure how much of the, of the data you can see on the screens there. But essentially, it was taking all of the various aspects of the, of, of each location, this, the, the groundwater direction for the OWTS effluent, the density of nitrogen, high groundwater, percentage of non-vacant parcels, number of buildings, density. So all of this, we're not getting into the weeds of this. Happy to do that on another occasion, but I want to keep this moving. All of this data was crunched together and to give us the weighting that came up with identifying which sewer sheds needed the most and the most immediate attention. We also have to consider that we have East Hampton and South Hampton, two separate sources of funding. So that's a consideration as well. So that the first was, we've been working on area K and L. Case scored highest, L and E were sort of equal. I can't see they were behind. L and E, L, E was slightly higher than L, but in the context of our conversation, these are almost equal. So we've been working on K and L. I mean, K, K came, came in with a score of three, and K is that area behind Main Street to the west of Main Street. It's Rose Street, Meadow Street, Bridge Street, as you run west. And we all know that there's a constant pooling of water there, a very high water table. You only have to go to the hardware store and look at what goes on downstairs in the cellar area to know that the water is right there. Subsect systems sitting in that location, to a large extent, may well be sitting in groundwater. So that sort of identified itself, and K and L were identified as the two areas in need of immediate attention. K was in the town of Southampton, L is in the town of East Hampton, and also in L's favor and quiet score is a little higher on different criteria is it's right next to the sewage treatment plant. So connecting L was going to be a lot less expensive than connecting an area of sort of equal pollution characteristics, but much further from the plant. And knowing we can only connect 300 homes, Cameron made some decisions as what was, what was going to give us the best value for money, which is a consideration in all of this, and the best reduction in nitrogen and coliforms. So K and L, you can see there are sort of northwest and northeast of Main Street, or west and east of Main Street, closest to the water. Other sewer sheds were identified throughout the village, and this was going to be our, sort of our plan that would guide us as we develop this project. K and L, the work we're doing on that, we, we now are referring to that project combined as phase one. Up to date on phase one, we've received grants from the town of Southampton CPF Water Quality for K and town of East Hampton CPF Water Quality for L to the tune of, I don't know, about three, I have this here, the tune of about three, around three million between them. East Hampton was just over 1 million. Southampton was 2.3 million. We've also got a 250,000 for Suffolk County for L. And these will end up being our local matches for grants we've applied to New York State for, under the, the CFA program. We applied in July of, of, of last year. We were expecting to have the results of that application before Christmas. They're late this year, and as of this afternoon, we were still waiting to hear from New York State for, for those amounts, and they were in the amount of.
Six million.
Yeah, six million, between the two of them to New York State, it was a grant of $6,290,034. Now, if you add all that together, we're talking about a $10 million project. And that goes into, kicks into capital planning for the village, because the village would have to front this money. We'd have to, we'd have to raise its money somehow in a temporary basis to execute the work, and then we would be reimbursed by the state through these guaranteed grants. So that's another aspect of this. So we've gotten to the point now where the financial aspect of this is equally as important or almost, is equally as important as the scientific aspect and the environmental aspect, because without money, none of this is going to happen at all. So there's our priorities. We've also looked at upgrading the sewage treatment plant through technology, and we feel that and by changing the technology from right now, it's called a sequenced batch reactor, and that's a, an oxygenation and deoxygenation of all of the effluent that's in those tanks. And there are natural bacteria in there that do all the cleansing. It's a remarkable system, because there are no chemicals added to it. It's just using agitation and oxygen to have this outflow, this, or this inflow somewhat clean itself before it settles in the bottom of the tank. And we skim off the clean water on top, and that goes, that stuff goes through the UV system. All the remaining sludge is carted away. Anybody who comes to our regular Board of Trustees meetings, I will read out every month how much sludge is carted, because there's a cost associated with that. But in any case, increasing our capacity, if we did this upgrade to a membrane reactor, we would increase the capacity from 250,000 to 320,000 gallons per day, and we have improved effluent quality. It would have better odor control. We have tank covers and scrubbers. We've actually added one tank cover and a scrubber in the last three months. And so we're hoping that will help when there are a number of occasions, there's a couple of operations down there. When a particular, when sludge is removed, that there is an odor problem. We're aware of that, and we're doing everything we can to mitigate that, so that the local, so residents and businesses that are located close to the plant are, are not going to have to, have to suffer that in the future. It doesn't happen all the time. It's time to time. It depends on the weather, it depends on the humidity and the wind direction. We're also looking at how we can harden the plant to protect it against the effects of sea level rise and storm surge. We got through super solid sand, sandy without any flooding down there, but it was a close run thing. The next steps, we want to complete the design, the contract documents for sewer sheds, K and L. Um, the next steps, um, we want to complete the design, the contract documents for sewer sheds K and L. We're waiting to hear the results of New York State grant applications, so that uh, we can go out for, for tender, knowing that we hopefully have all the funds required um, to, to execute. We want to identify, select the design, the next areas to extend source to, and I'm going to let John talk about that in a second. Um, we're going to prepare an engineering report to upgrade the wastewater treatment plant to the three hundred twenty thousand gallons per day. Um, and then we want to conduct workshops like this with the, with the village residents on shore extensions, looking for grants constantly. And we want to continue, you know, to support water quality monitoring programs. So here's a, a, a final slide, it shows you K and L, um, you can see the streets inside K. Um, Meadow Bridge, Upspring Street, some of Garden Street, some of Howard Street. And it's all that low lying land that's uh, that runs along the water. You can also see here in that sort of purple magenta is the, are the existing uh, source service areas. You can see one runs up Long Island Avenue and goes west out to West Water Street. Uh, we have one comes up Main Street, splits down onto Madison Street and Main Street runs south. Division Street has one. Um, and then you can see how area L is so close to the plant that at, you know, a dollar spent for pound of nitrogen removed is a very good equation over there. And we will be able to tie these new areas into the existing structure. One note is, but given the nature of the um, of the groundwater levels in area K, we would be using the low pressure system and in area L, we'd be using a um, gravity system. When we think about these, this project and the amount of money involved and the numbers are sort of, sort of eye watering at some, at certain stages, we're talking about hundred year infrastructure, like some of the current infrastructure in the village. Um, the, the main build out is about fifty-five, sixty years old. Some of the infrastructure is getting, is older than that. So while we're sort of comparing cost per um, pound of nitrogen removed and the cost for connecting a home to the sewer system compared to connecting it to an IA system, we have to figure in that, first of all, the sewer system is managed by professionals every day and the outflow is constantly monitored and overseen by the DEC and Suffolk County Health Department. IA systems, I know, um, we expect people to maintain them, but I think in the real world, that may not be a hundred percent. Um, we also have to look at the life of an IA system, given their, you know, which is not something that has been fully established. But we do know that a sewer system that's installed and maintained properly is going to run for about a hundred years. So this is not just for us, it's for the next generations. So the next stage in all of this, which is not part of this presentation, um, I go ahead and over to John with phase two, and that's going to be an area that we are coming.
Hey, could you, before you do that, could, could we leave this slide upon, on the?
Absolutely, yeah. I will, you call us, call whatever slide you want, John, and I will uh, bring him in.
But I wanted to do, I mean, Aiden's gone through a, oh, awful lot of material, you know, you know, very fast and uh, uh, I want to find out whether there's questions, because there should be questions about, about this. Uh, and if there are, maybe we've gone through it too fast or we didn't explain it enough. Uh, but just looking, looking at this slide, uh, you know, you've got an idea, this is sort of a core area of the village. Uh, you know, closest to the harbor, um, both, both close to the, to the Cove on one side of the left and, and to the, to the, to the harbor within the breakwater on the, on the right. Can we get that slide back?
Yeah, sorry.
And they're pointing at your newest, the uh, slide here, but uh, but you can see obviously with, you know, with the location of the, of the plant. You know, YL is an obvious location, it's also close to the water, very short travel time. Uh, it's high groundwater levels, you know, et cetera. Are there any questions about that, about K and L? Um, about doing those in terms of, of a priority?
Yeah, why don't you come to the podium and state your name, please?
And feel free to interrupt any part of this, uh, you know.
Uh, are you including the uh, the new uh, Rachel in this plan?
Yes, on, 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 on Division Street.
Yes.
Correct. Yes, the, the original plan did not, did not include that. And, and we came down a little further down Division Street and uh, and, and added it, 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 and I think it's, is that right there?
Okay, I understand that was a major source.
But I believe if you look at the, if you look at the map, that's, you know, that's, that's right here. Uh, uh, because originally when they planned it, they were, uh, like you can see the current. I mean, here's where the current uh, line comes. Uh, and what we were doing is bringing it down uh, here to cover all of those areas that are in the, you know, that are, that are, they're in the blue. Uh,
John, I have a quick question, um, and I don't know if you guys can answer this. But um, I know that you discussed that we're waiting to hear from the state for six million dollars in grant money and so forth. Is there any, if that comes through, say in the next two, three months, whatever it would be? Is there any, do you have any idea of when this, these projects might start happening?
Um, if the grant money comes through, we will immediately go to bid. We have done, there, there were a number of phases in this, one phase that's already been complete for K and L or all the engineering bid documents are already prepared. And they were paid for and we all a debt of gratitude to both East Hamptons and Southampton Towns CPF Water Quality Committees. Because they have funded this from the very beginning, um, and part of that funding with the engineering documents. So we're sitting on documents, pretty much ready to go. They might need some like little changes uh, here and there, because we, we've moved some boundaries. Um, but we have documents showing pipes and streets, showing manholes, showing connections. And we've also, John, included in our grant applications, I believe, the cost of connecting the homes, not just taking the laterals to the boundaries of the property. Um, I know in K, Cameron had been into every home in there to inspect the conditions and to try and come up with some idea of what it might cost to connect to each home. Um, so there's, as, to answer your question, if it's not too late, um, I would say that we could go out to bid within two, three months, uh, or two months. And then we would, you know, whenever we get the bid documents, so that if we had the funding in place, um, it's one thing to have the grant funding, we, we also need to have the village finances aligned with the grant funding. And that's a project we're working on right now, and I don't have an answer to that as to when the village would be in a position to uh, to fund this, to fund this. I would hope within a year, maximum two.
Terrific, thank you.
It's, it's going to be two or three years before we actually have pipes in the ground. I mean, I'm not happy with that prediction from, from the engineers as to how long this takes, but apparently it's a, you know, it's a lengthy process. But I mean, we're ready to begin as, as soon as that, that comes through. In, in regards to what, uh, what Aiden said, I think this is important for the residents of, of the village. Uh, I mean, we made a decision in, in, in looking at this, uh, you know, early on, when we looked at the cost of hooking up each home. Of, originally when we started this four years ago, we were looking at estimates that the cost of hooking up a home might be five thousand dollars. At most, seven or eight thousand dollars, uh, which is significant. Uh, but as time went on, the cost for all of this went way up. Uh, and, and what we, the original concept and the concept is, that's been in place for, you know, forever, basically. It is, is that the homeowner would pay for the cost of the street to their house for, for the hookup. Well, we saw costs that, that were in the fifteen, twenty thousand dollar range for home hookup. Uh, and, and costed near the, you know, actually, in some instances, depending upon how big your property was, how wide that to be run. Uh, or what type of system was being used, uh, that you could be over twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand dollars.
And there's a, there's a case to be made that uh, with stuff, with the grants that are available for IA systems that, uh, to help homeowners hook up. Uh, we also discussed the idea of, you know, approaching Suffolk County to see if we could have similar grants available for sewer hookup. But having considered all of that, we think that when the engineering a- and the teams are on the ground in the village, that the most efficient way of doing this is to do it all at the same time. Um, to actually, well, if you remember when we did Madison, I think it was Madison Street to connect the church, um, there were some laterals put in place for the homes that the pipe would pass by. And they stopped at the property line. Um, then it was up to the homeowners to come back and connect and to reorient the outflow from their own home or their property to connect to that. And so, you know, while the funding is available, and there is a lot of funding available in New York State right now, since the um, through recent legislation, we decided we should, as they say, if you're going to go to the well once, bring a big bucket, that we should try and get the maximum amount um, to help the village to develop this project.
Yeah, but to finish, to finish my, my, my thought here is, is that what we decided is to, you know, is to apply, you know, for the homeowner connection costs. And, and, and those are significant. In, in terms of, of L, we're talking about six hundred thousand dollars, uh, in, in terms of, of uh, uh, of, of K, uh, we're talking about over a million dollars. Uh, and, and the K in Southampton, they have granted that. So, so that there, there will be a fund for homeowner connection costs. Whether it'll cover the cost of each homeowner for the total, that, that's, that's, that's still a question. But, but at least we've, we've applied for it, it's been approved. That, those connections aren't eligible for, for state or county funding. So we had to go to the CPF Water Quality Funding for that. But I think it's an important point that we're trying to cover the homeowner cost uh, as, as much as, as much as possible. Um, uh, a, any questions on, uh, you know, on, on this? Again, on the areas, you know, we started talking about these areas. You know, I'll point out too, you know, that surprisingly on, on the right hand side, you know, you had areas that, that the breakwater yacht club, Sec Harbor Yacht Yard, which is basically right next to the plant, which ever, which had never been, never been connected. We also picked up a commercial building on the other side of that. So it's actually a mix, this is not just, we, you know, it's talked about, about uh, uh, you know, homeowner costs and, and three hundred gallons per day. But there's also a mix of commercial and, and as, as Bob pointed out, we're picking up the school here, uh, so it's a mix. And, and one of the things that complicated, you know, doing area L particularly, was there were streets where uh, commercial buildings had been picked up and uh, residential had not. Because the original idea of, of, of the sewer was to do the, do Main Street, do all the commercial buildings. In doing that, they left out a lot of areas, it's very small streets up there. It ended up being fairly expensive to fill this in, because in some instances, you were only doing one side of the street, uh, because the other side of the street had already been done. So obviously, it's more expensive to run pipe, you know, per foot, if you're only breaking up one side than, than, than the other. Uh, so i- if there are any questions about the uh, about where we are to date, uh, we can go ahead and look at where we're posing to go from here. As I say, what's clear is, you know, this is all set, other than getting them on.
Right, there's, there's one slide I'd like to throw up, which is of interest, which shows uh, the locations of, we did some research to find out where there were IA systems in the village. And this is not a hundred percent, uh, we're still waiting for some more information, but it gives you a good idea where IA, IA systems are spread around. So the sort of magenta color arrow has applications pending, which there were thirty-seven. Installed in the village are sixty-seven.
Hey, you, you need a slide, Aiden.
What's that?
Need a slide, you're going to go to the slide for the IA systems.
Oh, I'm sorry, can you see it now?
No, we're still on K and L.
Okay, hold on a second here, let me uh, close that. I thought you, okay, I'm going to share again, share that. Can you see it now?
No.
Yeah.
Okay, let me, oh, here we go, all right. You just got to follow the system here.
There we go.
Okay, so, so there are the sewer sheds that exist in the village. And overlaid on that are three different colored stars, if you could make it out. Um, one set of, one is the magenta color is uh, applications pending thirty-seven. The blue color star there is applications or a number of installed systems, which is sixty-seven. And the permit constructor are fifty-two. And we can make all these slides available, obviously, it's kind of hard to see on the screen. One of the interesting things about this is the number is tiny compared to in the village of over a thousand homes, we have sixty-seven IA systems installed. Um, the map kind of looks good, because it seems like there's a lot of stars on it, but uh, each, you know, it's a very small number and I, so we've, I know that John and I feel discussing this and it'll be nice to get uh, your input.
Then at the, hey, let me give you, let me give some statistics on it, if I can. Uh, you know, in, in five years, since the program has been, been available, three percent of the, of village, which was not sewered, uh, has installed IA systems. Uh, that's an average of thirteen uh, per year. Uh, another five point six percent has applications uh, pending. Uh, at the, at the is, at the current installation rate, it would take a hundred and thirty years uh, to upgrade septic systems for the entire village. Uh, so that's a problem. Um, and that, that shows you one, why we're trying to sewer, because we can sewer a whole bunch of homes, you know, run, run away, get it, get it, get it done. We can't rely on, on the idea that the, the voluntary upgrades, tie-in systems, you know, are going to do it, even if they're fully paid for. Uh, so.
Can I jump in with a question or a comment? Uh, I, I know, uh, this is John speaking in, uh, this, uh, we've, we've discussed this in, in, in Zoom meetings before. I know that it's been difficult for you guys to get the information of exactly where the AI systems are in the village, and you're getting most of this information, I believe, from the health department, from, from the county, which is, seems to be incomplete or spotty. Um, for example, my home was not on the, on the list, I got a new one two years ago. So uh, uh, just a general question coming from a planning board member. Would it be helpful for the village, do you think, to track? The village does not track, it's, have its own records of where IA systems go in. Would it be useful or might it be worth considering?
It, it's definitely worth considering, but there's no, if, if you have a system and you upgraded and pay for it yourself, um, I don't know anywhere where the village would be involved in, in recording that. There's, there's no requirement, I think it, it would all live with Suffolk County Health Department. And I'm not sure of the intricacies of their requirements if you are not applying for a grant.
Except perhaps if the village required a building permit.
That would be, that would be something that would be worth discussing, so that we could track this um, as we go ahead. And it would be, I, I, I think that would be helpful, um, if the village, if the village required a permit. I am not sure when it comes to searing, it gets quite sort of quirky between Suffolk County and the village as to what the village is, um, what the village is, I don't know if it is, could, could maybe.
She, she just stepped out for the moment, but okay.
She did, but it's a, it's a question that's well worth asking, it would be great if we could do that.
I, I don't want to rile us, but I want, I, while you were in the room, I wanted to ask the question, thank you.
Okay.
Set some light on that, uh, this is Doris Secretary. Um, as of our new building inspector side, we are requesting building, he is requesting building.
Wonderful.
Okay, fantastic.
Excellent.
So then we can have the live document that we will upgrade.
Excellent, thank you, Doris.
Okay.
Um, they also, let me also point out though that, you know, if you look at all these stars, you know, it looks, oh, it looks like we're going to have IA systems at all those locations. Recognize that the majority of those were just applications.
Yeah. There's only, there's only sixty-seven installed systems in the village, and there are more than double that number of stars. So if you take the pendings and the permits that have been issued but not installed, there are eighty-nine, thirty-seven plus fifty-two. So there's eighty-nine applications slash permits issued, and there's only sixty-seven installed.
Kind of what I'd make is, is it, it, just because it's an application, doesn't mean you're going to get an installation.
No, I agree.
Because for, you know, for example, if you have a project uh, which is going to go before the harbor committee, uh, let's say to, you know, add fifty percent to, to your house that's, that's, that's on the water. Uh, and uh, the guidelines are going to require, the code is going to require that you upgrade uh, to an IA system in order to do that. You know, you come before the harbor committee or you come before the zoning court, and you've got some other problem with the project. And the project doesn't go through.
Right.
The IA system is probably not going to go through either. So, so this is, this is actually a rosier picture than, 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 than it could be, because we don't know how many of those that are applied for, that there's actually going to be a follow through on.
Right.
Um, by the way, somebody asked what, what an IA system was, and I don't know who we, you know, completely split, you know, explain that. It is shorthand for innovative alternative onsite systems. And these, these became available about four or five years ago. Um, a- as, and they weren't available before, before that. Uh, and, and they, they lower the amount of principally, the amount of nitrogen, um, which uh, which the system is, is putting out, Aiden talked about it before, uh, the typical septic system of which, which is still allowed, you know, by the county in most, most locations. Uh, uh, sixty-five, seventy uh, milligrams of nitrogen, uh, you know, per liter. The IA systems were permitted at nineteen. Uh, so that's a significant re- reduction uh, for, and they're usually with a drain field. Uh, and the costs are thirty thousand dollars, forty thousand dollars, depending upon the, the location. There are grants available. There are grants available to cover most of that cost between, you know, town, county and and state grants. So I just wanted to get that in for people who may not have been familiar with.
Right, and they're no longer taxable events, I can, that's a new thing. Um so that makes it more appealing to homeowners. John, if I may, I'm 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 aware of the time, so I know you wanna go toward uh where we're going next, um so I.
Okay, I I gotta pull that slide up for John and I'm gonna uh hand the floor over to him. Let me see here. Share screen. Can you see that slide now?
Yes.
Okay, so John, the floor is yours.
Okay. And this is a little bit hard to see. Uh actually, I should have had a bigger pointer here, but uh oh, he's spread it a little bit. But the, now you're too big, Aiden, so zoom back a little bit, zoom back a little bit. Okay, stay stay there, that's that, that's that's good. Uh so, okay, this again i- is a, is a, is an overlay where you see some of the designations uh for sewer shed areas, this J, this O, this P, this this H. Uh uh up where Bay Street is, you have L, it's hard to see. K is red areas, but basically, these orange and red areas were the areas that scored higher on on the on on the matrix. Can you uh scan back a little bit, Aiden, pull it back a little bit?
Sure.
Okay, now, okay, that's good, that's good. Uh now, if you can see the black lines. The black lines are where we're proposing uh to 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 sewer. Uh and there's a couple of different proposals for for where to go uh because there's a lot of considerations and 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 one of them is 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 cost. In other words, how many feet of 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 right away pipe are you gonna have to put down in order to pick up a certain number of homes? Uh and another consideration is is so uh how much of a of a of a an effect and immediate effect is is that gonna have? So that homes that are right on the water may have more of an effect if you sewer and 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 cut off that large source of nitrogen as opposed to ones that are that are farther away. Uh there's a couple of different versions of 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 this of this map and there's an updated version. You know, I can tell you, for instance, that the 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 you'll see Palmer Terrace on 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 this version. And there's another version of 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 that map that instead of having Palmer Terrace, has Bayview Avenue uh which which is is closer to the Cove. Uh and I believe you get a few more homes per foot of foot of pipe. Uh there's some questions as to whether to go out uh John Street, if you could see it, see see there and yelled out into out into F uh or uh whether to come further down uh depth down Main Street, uh which would be coming down here, uh possibly picking up uh Fordham, which is a block away from from there. Um those decisions haven't been, haven't been named yet. But but this is, this is the general idea of 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 where to go on. And and I think this is, I mean, this is something that there should be a lot of questions on. And you should be asking, uh well, you know, why are we going out to uh to Azure Rest? Uh why are we going out to to the river beach in there? Uh those are areas that are right on the water, would they have a large effect uh in in terms of of very short travel time from from that system, you know, to the water? Uh and I expect some of you to be asking those questions, uh or or want out to go go to go to Redwood. Uh and are there questions about that? Do you have, or am I the only one to ask you the question?
Well, John. Chime in real quick, it's Kay Lawson on the TV.
Sure.
Um I don't know, you know, I think it seems very straightforward. You guys have done a great deal, it looks like, of work. You had your um outside consultant doing analysis. Uh it all makes perfect sense. Um so I think that's why I don't have any questions. And, you know, I know um we do have some time sensitive um for the meeting tonight. And I don't know what the planning board needs to do with this, it doesn't seem like our normal kind of um, you know, application or anything like that.
Well, I can talk about that a little bit. Um it it is not an application, um but the planning board, there's been, there's been an interest in not just the mayor, but the trustees as well. And um we have two of them, one one on the meeting and one in the room, who are here. Um and they have a a vision that the planning board will become more um attuned to what's going on in the village, um not only with with the applications in front of it, but might be better um educated and maybe make some contributions into bigger decision making in terms of uh general planning in the village. So this was an opportunity for us to learn something here and educate ourselves at the planning board level and for the the uh the the people in the village at at large, have an opportunity to either watch on Zoom or read about it in the paper. Um and also an opportunity for the people, guys working on this particular project, in this case, Aiden and John and myself to a certain extent, um to to sort of hear feedback, see what people are not understanding um as they go forward. I know there's some time sensitivity in terms of when this grant application to the towns for what you're proposing, John Parker. Um I think it's in March or April. Um so thus, they're coming to us now so that we and others in the village will will have some questions, they'll hear some feedback um in case that, so so the application, when it goes to the towns for CPF funding will be properly worded and and so forth.
I I I think, John, just to to add to that, the early stages of this area K and L, they jumped out as sort of emergency areas. We actually started working on grants for them before the plan was finished because the nature of the situation there was such that it needed immediate remediation. As we spread out further and we have more decisions to make, as John said, is it Palmer Terrace or is it Bayview? Then we really have to, we'd like to hear more voices because it's, this is not John's plan, it's not my plan. Um it's the village's plan and so the planning board seemed like a very logical place to come to with a plan um that affects areas, some areas of the village and not others as far as the infrastructure goes. But water quality affects every home and so it's, it underpins almost everything that Seck Harbor is. And so it's important to get as many voices involved um a- as as we can.
Hello, you know, quick answer to the question is 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 if you want the planning board's support.
Uh yeah.
What's supportive of 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 committees and boards and of the residents of the village altogether? Uh I mean, I don't wanna present a plan that that a whole lot of people are 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 gassed. We're, you know, if you've got questions or why are we doing this, why are we not doing this? I mean, now's the time to discuss them. You know, I raised a question, you know, why are we, why aren't we going to, you know, to to Azure Rest? For for instance, why are we going to to Seck Harbor Hills and Nuba Beach? You know, they're right on the on the on the water. Why are you doing these areas over near the Cove rather than going going out there? Well, I can give you some answers to those questions. Uh you know, one, it it would be a long run of pipe to get to uh where you see Terry Drive, Hillside Drive East, uh C, the areas C, B and A. You know, what's the reason? Because if you look at J, you know, there's nothing in J that would be sewed, that's Core Maria. Uh you know, you'd be searing, you know, one facility. Now, maybe there's a reason to do that, but it's an awful long run of pipe to get there and you're not picking up much on on the way. Two, uh this is an area where the soil, the elevations uh are perfect for putting in IA systems, individual individual systems. There are none of the problems that you see in other areas of the village where they're very low lining, where there's, where there's very small properties, where there's a high groundwater, which is difficult to put an IA system in. Uh uh you know, three, the water off of there has a much better quality uh and is flushed better by the tides than the area in the Cove. The testing of the Cove says it's 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 very much impaired in terms of the quality of the water in that area. So if you're gonna try to mitigate water quality, you're gonna target those areas that have the that have the worst quality first. Also, i- if you see, however, the water that's in the Cove, when it does come out, it comes out all the way around and would get out to the outer, to the outer bay. So by treating the water in here uh and preventing that from deteriorating, you're also improving the water quality out farther into the bay.
That's why you referred to possibly Palmer Terrace being included in it because it's right next to Oakland, right next to the pond.
Yeah, sure, I mean, that's, that's, uh you know, yes, those are, those are questions as to what areas, you know, you do here. You know, you can come over and say, well, well, you ought to do Fordham uh because Fordham is right next to Ligonie Brook. Uh and Ligonie Brook comes out and Ligonie Brook, uh that area of 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 the Cove that that runs into is very much impaired. So so yeah, that's a question, you know, you got outer pond, outer pond flushes out in in into there. So so that's one of the reasons for clusters around outer pond, around around the around the Cove. Uh
John, to 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 K's point, it's quite, I think the color map you're showing is really clear um about which was the hierarchy of what's, what areas score higher or lower uh for uh needing, for being problematic with regard to the sewage um nitrogen issues. So it's it's pretty, it's pretty clear to us that the bright red and the orange are the real problem areas.
Sure, and and you got the other areas are, you know, you've got areas in here, you know, P and N and, you know, where 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 you may be five years for the groundwater to get to the surface water. Whereas you've got other areas where it's it's not five minutes, but it but it's, it could be five months or or less.
And John, we have, we have a question from a gentleman in the back of the room, if you will just state your name at the podium, that'd be great. Thank you.
Um I'm Tom Moore, I live on Glover Street. I'm just curious to see, is that suggesting Glover is one of these uh key areas, but it looks like that's gonna be several years away before any sewer system is put in. Is that the the general, is that correct or that?
Um that is not necessarily correct because this area has, as as um as John pointed out, uh this area has not been finalized. Palmer Terrace is in here, but we're not sure that that is the the uh most beneficial uh space to to sewer. So Bayview and Glover Street are still very much in the conversation, this is the map we have tonight. Um and we will have more discussions before this area, these areas are 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 the boundaries are finalized. Um John, if you wanna answer or if you wanna add to that, if I've missed anything or misstated anything?
No, I I I'll just, as I say, what Aiden says is this isn't the final, you know, map. You know, we've got a couple of different versions of the map that we're, you know, that we're looking at and we're having conversations back and forth with with Cameron Engineering, who are, you know, scientific consultants on this, as to what are the, you know, what are the best areas to cover? Uh there's some alternatives, there's some other questions. There there's questions are, you know, should we run a pipe down the street, for instance, which already has a number of IA systems on it? Uh you know, are they already covered? Glover Street is is actually, there's a, there's a fair number of of upgrades that have already been made. And so it's a, it's it's an ongoing conversation as to whether that takes away the priority of going down that street because they're already in the process of 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 upgrade. And there's a number of places that are that are there. We haven't come to a conclusion as to whether that should.
The logic is clear, the logic is clear and I think you covered it, Mike.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Good.
Um well, so we've had, we've had an hour of your time, I hope it was beneficial for everybody. And if anybody has questions, they can always email, we're happy to answer them and if I can't answer them, I'll kick them onto Cameron. Um and I I really appreciate everybody's interest in this, it 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 helps keep it moving.
Let me, and I'll just add one more, one more thing, this is this is partly in regards to your question about Glover Street. You know, this is phase two, that that we're talking about. And and we're talking about doing approximately two hundred homes. There was phase one, what was rough numbers, eighty homes. And of course, get this, it's eighty homes, ten million dollars, all right? Uh we're talking about doing approximately two hundred homes. Do the math on that as to how much that's gonna cost. Um I'll tell you, it's gonna be a little cheaper for a couple of reasons per per property, but it's gonna be up there. We're, you know, we're gonna be maybe in the twenty million dollar range, or the dollar range for that. Uh but it's also gonna be at phase three, i- if the plant is expanded uh to pick up another seventy thousand gallons. Uh some of that's gonna be reserved because you gotta have.
If I could just interject for one sec, John, we're not talking about expanding the plant physically. We're talking about upgrading the technology to expand the capacity. We're not gonna build, there's no conversation going on about building more tanks. Uh there are conversations about upgrading technology that would fit inside the existing tanks.
Yeah, that's what what what, what Aiden discussed further was was changing to a membrane reactor to allow the same physical plant to process seventy thousand more gallons per day. Uh but in regards to some of these other areas, uh which you could say G is 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 Redwood, you could say more more of an area of F, you could pick up some of these other areas that are that are in 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 I, for instance, or or in H. You know, that could be part of that next phase. Uh we're just sort of prioritizing giving a certain number of current uh excess capacity. You know, how best to use that capacity to get the right best back to the buck, to have the 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 most, you know, mitigation of current problem uh of dealing with the amount of nitrogen that's already been put into the, you know, in into the water. Uh you know, I was in a meeting earlier today uh in in East Hampton, we were talking in detail about eelgrass and the importance of eelgrass to the to the aquatic environment and how it's the basis for scallops and, you know, and fish and crabs and everything. And 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 doing surveys and doing mapping as to as to where there's still beds of eelgrass and 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 where they're not and what the causes are of 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 the destination of 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 eelgrass. Uh well, one thing is, you know, in our bay, you know, most of it, there's no eelgrass left. And the eelgrass left between two thousand eleven and two thousand fourteen, you know, in in about a two or three year period. It went from being what I would describe if you were, if you were snorkeling underwater, being a lush meadow of 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 grass uh to coming back two or three years later and having it look like a desert.
Uh yeah, if if I, if I could, for a sec, if there are no more questions, I I'm actually up on Westchester and I wanted to get back to Seck Harbor tonight. So if you have no questions for me, I'd like to drop off the screen and uh and follow this um later on.
Aiden, one question for you, if um is, I I heard you talk about you, you would like the support. Or, you know, one of the things that would be nice to have is the support of the planning board. Will you folks come back to us if you have upgrades or need some more question?
Sure, I I think, I think what we will do, we'll come back to you and specifically on phase two, as we get closer to establishing the boundary, so the gentleman who was inquiring about Glover Street, that's a conversation that's ongoing um as to whether we do that. So I think before we would finalize phase two, we would wanna come back to the planning board to make sure that we have your support for the boundaries.
Great, and as as we, the more we learn about it, I think the more questions we might have and um and we could potentially um uh some support you guys in a formal way going forward, whether that's in front of the village board or or elsewhere.
Fantastic.
Good. Thank you very much.
All right, I'm gonna sign off, John, you're on your own.
Okay, there you go.
Thank you, bye bye.
We may, we may, but I wanna say thank you to John, if you have any more to say. Uh uh I think you've covered mostly everything we need to for tonight, but um would you wanna wrap up your thoughts about eelgrass?
Well, yeah, I'm just, I'm just just saying that the unless you're underwater, you know, unless you dive or swim or out there, you don't really notice the difference, that if you're flims. Well, sure, but maybe for those of us who have it, you know, I've been seventy some years where I've been in the water out, you know, water out here.
So it does what you're saying.
I mean, it's just so dramatic. I I mean, if this happened above, on on the on the land, people would be horrified, you know, that that they would be you know, storming the village hall, the town halls and saying, what happened? But because it's underwater, most people don't.
You don't know it.
It it it, but it's so obvious, if, you know, if 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 you're able to look down and to see what was it, was a lush habitat with scallops and crabs and minnows and 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 all kinds of other things and have it just in a couple of years disappear.
Such a reckoning, nitrogen related?
It it is mostly, I mean, there's still studies that they're doing on eelgrass, I could get into, you know, just through, and just into what was discussed at the meeting I was at earlier today, you know, talking about it for half hour. Uh why, nitrogen is, nitrogen is the, is 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 clearly the main culprit. Eelgrass doesn't move if 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 the water that it's in has a high nitrogen content. And that level is about five milligrams per liter. Uh so anything above that that you're putting out in in into the into the surface water is is working against, you know, the, you know, we'd like to restore it, I mean, that, and that.
John, if I may, if I may, thank, I wanna thank you for coming in, I wanna thank you for doing this. Uh this has been information, really, I think, if anyone else has more questions.
I I just wanna make a just quick comment, I wanna thank you guys for doing this, this is like an amazing job, right, really shows the the need. Everybody's, you know, should be, our hair should be on fire at this point with what's happening. And uh thanks for explaining the Sands community. As as a former resident in the Sands community, I always thought that that would be one of the first areas that should be. As as a former resident of the Sands community, I always thought that that would be one of the first areas that should be plugged in. Because, you know, we, my family was always down at the beaches there. So it makes sense now that you explained it. So thank you.
Right.
Thank you, John.
Feel free to ask me if you have any other questions.
Thank you, John, and I'm I'm sure you'll come back in. Most appreciated. Also, regarding Sands, one of one of the criteria, if you remember, was concentrate or number of houses per acre, say, the concentration of homes. They tend to be larger plots over there as opposed to smaller plots.
Yeah, the the lot size, especially in the in the older parts of the village are very small.
That's right.
They're pulled together. The lots may not be big enough to put in an IA system. So so that's part of the. Of the factors that are that are taken into account of. And again, you know, we're we're looking for a consensus. You know, we're hoping that you'll, you know, look at what we're proposing and say, that looks reasonable, that looks good.
Thank you, John. And it's it's clear, there's an enormous amount of work you guys have been putting into this. So it's most appreciated. And then we'll move on to to other issues. Look, that was, that was the board discussion session that will now move on to section five decision. Stephen Lowford, 152 Hampton Street. This was. This was something we had a public meeting on, I believe, last month, which was opened and closed, if I'm correct about that. And I think it's now time for us to make a decision. And I think Kathy, you've circulated. What what do you call it? Does the?
Final conditional approval.
That's the word. You've all seen that, I assume. Yes.
So this this resolution that you have before you has a basic project. Decision site description and a bit about the process to find the facts. As you know, this site plan came before the planning board and originally part of the application was for retail use. Which this board could not consider. That had to go to the zoning board for a non-conforming use. In the R20 district. So it was both the expansion of the building and then the request was for retail. So this kind of put the plan was a little bit of a, okay, who goes first? But the planning board was the lead agency under the State Environmental Quality Review Act. And so the way that this board handled the the determination of significance was to apply conditions on that determination. Because retail use as a more intensive use than office, which was already approved by the zoning board previously. Retail use would have, in general, more cars, more traffic in and out of there. So this through the the review, we have traffic engineer look at the proposed retail uses that the applicant provided. And identify those which were more similar to an office use as far as the number of trips are concerned. So those were specifically identified in the conditions negative declaration that this board adopted in November of 2021. And then so that allowed the applicant to go back to the zoning board. Because this was a coordinated review, the zoning board used the negative determination on this board.
Excuse me.
Especially, the zoning board, after deliberations, denied the applicant's request for retail use. But did allow for the expansion of the building. And so what that does here is puts us in a position of the secret determination conditions no longer apply. So just to to make sure that we, you know, come full circle. We've updated the secret determination for your consideration to adopt this evening without the conditions because they no longer apply.
So that that would make it a non.
Negative declaration.
Negative declaration, thank you, yes.
So this board held their public hearing on December 21st. There were no comments from the public, but there were some comments from the planning board identifying some things in the site plan. That should be addressed as part of the conditions of this approval. So this approval identifies some revisions that are to be completed by the applicant. The first is to update the planting plan to be consistent with the HBARB's approval. Their approval had different plantings, so the the plan needs to be consistent. To include a an extended stocking fence to to end where the first parking space or the last parking space ends. To to avoid, to provide a visual barrier. An updated lighting plan to do a number of things. One is to make sure that, of course, it's consistent with those code, but also to reduce the temperature of the lights even further. Under those code, a maximum of 2,700 Kelvin is permitted. And the board prefers 2,300 as low, so a little bit warmer. And also to look at the foot candle contours, which need to extend past the property line to show that there won't be fugitive lighting on the residential properties. So that needs to be shown. There, the wall sconce locations on the building need to be mounted at the lowest height. That's practical for the door. And also those need to be shown on all the doors where it is proposed. So it wasn't necessarily, it wasn't clear on the plan that they would have each of the doors with capitalist lights. On one of the sheets, one of the the images was missing, so we just wanted to make sure that that's shown on the final plans. The plan should indicate that dust to dawn, that that all the all the exterior lights will be extinguished no later than a half an hour after the close of business. And dust to dawn sensors are not permitted by village code. And there is another note related to automatic lighting control controls. So that way the lightings are, the lighting is extinguished during daylight hours automatically. And then there is another condition related to motion sensors. To make sure that any lit at motion sensors for after hours, if people are, you know, working late. That there is a, there's an option for motion sensors, but they have to be adjusted to the light to not trigger by motion off the property. And and that they can only be installed and utilized on doorways where that are not really, that are not open to the public and are. But are only available for emergency access. So those are the lighting. They, there is a requirement that the all the entry doors be shown. Because there is one location where they're showing a waste perceptible outside a doorway, but there's no doorway shown. So we just want to make sure that that's clear on the plans. There's required statements that need to be put on the site plan for the owner's signature. There are several required permits. The DOC needs to actually provide the permit. They have indicated that they don't have an issue with this application, but they need now to provide the permit. The village fire marshal will need to sign off on the final plans. We don't need GPW. We, there was a referral sent to GPW, but we will need their actual sign off for the proposed sidewalk, which is in the building right away. All signage would be subject to review by the the senior building inspector pursuant to section 300 dash 9.7. And if deemed necessary, the building inspector can refer that to the ARB. All HVAC chemical systems need to be screened. And prior to which, since the building permit, the applicant will provide the approval for their health department, health department approval for abandonment of the current system. And installation of an IA system on the property.
That's good. On the HVAC systems, I don't think they're on the the site plan now, are they? So when they're added, they they would, obviously, they should be within the setbacks required. And this plan, as I read it, will be reviewed by yourself and the building inspector. I think that's correct, right? So you'll be able to look for that, those things. Can you, can you explain to me the under section EI guarantee? What that is, the and the amount, guaranteeing the amount determined by the planning board before any approved plans? You know, I'm talking about in the middle of the page. So it's it's three E I. The bond bid.
Oh, that doesn't apply. Sorry, that's a holdover. That needs to come out.
Okay.
That is not, that's not.
Okay, good. That was a question in my head, so I'm glad. Okay, great. That resolves that. Okay. Does anyone have any questions, Kay, or anyone else?
No questions. Thanks, Kathy.
Okay, well, there are no questions. This looks good to me. This looks like it's it seems, sounds, it reads like what we just were talking about last month. So if there, if people are in agreement, then I'll accept a a motion to approve this.
So moved.
Okay, seconded by Ron. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So approved. Regarding the. The environmental forum, do we, do I need to sign something that's included in that decision?
I have a hard copy and send me down to the reference. You can sign off.
Okay.
We didn't read that specifically, but that is part of this decision.
It is part of this, right? Doris, I'm sorry, where do I sign this? Right there, got it. Sign it here. Right there. Okay, got it. Thank you. Pass that back to her. Okay. I think that that resolves for us 152 Hampton Street. Am I right about that? Okay, do we close that out in any way or or we remove on? Super. Next item, discussion item preliminary application for Gene Kane Sikowski, 325 Division Street. And 327 Division Street. And someone's come to the podium. Hello, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you, Pope Malaterno, turning for the applicant.
Hello. Good, good. Glad you're here. We have all received a bunch of paperwork, but maybe you want to explain a little bit on yourself, what briefly, what what you're doing.
The proposed spot line modification at 325 and 327 Division Street. Flag law lot transferring possibly 10,500 square feet. We currently have. It's, I don't know if it knocks through too high, but it does a great job.
I have, I got that, yeah. Yeah. It seems pretty straightforward. So essentially, essentially, what's happening, what was the flag pole of a flag lot? Will will be, will disappear because the the property in the in the in the flag portion can be accessed from the from the street behind. On Montauk Avenue. Right, 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 okay. Can you, you referred to the health department approval. That that was, can you just clarify that for me? Because I know the the health department's for wastewater.
Yeah, Sub County approved to modify the tax maps. So we're getting. The configuration of the tax lots are gonna change, so you're supposed to get county approval for that.
Okay, okay. There was also a question at some point, Kathy, maybe I'm being premature bringing this bit up, about whether the. It's in the groundwater overlay map, is that right?
No, it's in the groundwater management zone, which requires 40,000 square foot lots.
Right.
And that's why, you know, when you submit a subdivision to the health department, that might flag. You know, if it's less than the required area for the health department, they might have had to go to quarter review. Before the review of this, that part of the lot is not part of the building area and it's not creating any new lots. So whoever reviewed it may have said, yeah, this this is not.
So that's. That's covered under the health department?
Yeah.
Okay, got, so it's handled. Okay, okay. It seems pretty straightforward to me. I I I think there's a shed that needs to be removed. On the on the property toward the rear on the Montauk Avenue side.
Applicants.
Yeah, I saw that.
Chris as well.
Right, right.
The updated map showed that as well.
Yeah, yeah.
And it corrected, there was a couple of little minor things on the map that needed to be corrected. Yeah, yeah. Those are, those are everything that was fixed on his map. They, I think at this point, I mean, I think the void could proceed with public hearing. You have to, you have to refer it to the harbor committee at least. I'm not sure. Kane would love to check this to make sure only have to, might have to be referred. And then to utilities, Sub County Water Authority generally will make sure that they can get water from the street.
Isn't near wetlands? Is that why the harbor committee needs to look at it?
No, it's for consistency with the L of the R K. So it's for the gray area of what needs to go to the harbor committee for review. What we've we've been doing recently is in cases like this where it's, there's no conflict with the policies. Is to prepare the letter for the harbor committee to to lay it out so they can just, you know, review and agree. And not have to prepare a recommendation.
So it sounds like, it sounds straightforward to me. Does anyone have any questions or thoughts about it? And I I guess I can ask if anyone in the in the audience has any questions about, I don't think there is anyone here that I see. In in that case, I think it makes sense to just prepare for. You don't, thank you for reminding me of that, that we might as well schedule it for a public public hearing.
So what, when can you first come through, Dave?
The next meeting is the 28th, February 28th.
Okay.
That works. Okay.
The next harbor committee is when?
The next harbor committee is the second.
Up for 28th.
Yeah.
That gives enough time for harbor committee as well. All right, but I'll accept if I accept a motion for a public hearing on this application for February 28th of this year. That's Ron and seconded by Nat. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. See you in a month. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan.
Those are very clean applications, if you ask me. Pretty well put together. I think that's it on the agenda. Is there anything else I'm forgetting? At Kay, am I forgetting anything or anything you want to talk about?
No, thanks, though.
Anyone in the audience have anything left to say? I think we're good. Motion to adjourn, please.
I moved.
And seconded?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming. I appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Jess.
You're very welcome.